...Board Meeting for July 2, 2019. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Cammerer?
Here.
Carbonaro?
President.
Daney?
Here.
Cabrera?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. We've requested that Campus Pastor Corey Schumate from Christ Community Church do our invocation this evening. Pastor Schumate? Thank you, Pastor Schumate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Brings us to our consent agenda this evening. All items listed with an asterisk will be enacted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion with items on the consent agenda. At this point, is there anything any board member would like to add or remove from the consent agenda?
Mr. President, can we add item 12B to the consent agenda?
Does anybody have any questions or comments about that?
No.
Okay. Anything else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda to include the bill's list for July 2, 2019. The consent this evening will also include, under Building and Zoning Committee, a resolution approving and directing the execution of the Public Improvement Completion Agreement for the MJB's Gerber Roads resubdivision. We'll be adding to the consent agenda, under Community and Economic Development, an ordinance granting a special use permit to allow live entertainment indoor only at 113 West Railroad Avenue, Bartlett Tap. The consent this evening will also include, under Public Works Committee, a resolution approving of the agreement between the Village of Bartlett and CAM LLC for the 2019 paving preservation treatment project.
Second.
Moved by trustee Cammerer, seconded by trustee Daney. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Daney?
Yes.
Cabrera?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Daney, seconded by trustee Cammerer. Will the clerk, again, please call the roll?
Trustee Cabrera?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
That motion carries. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes, the board minutes, from June 18, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Daney, seconded by trustee Carbonaro. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Cabrera?
Epstein.
The motion carries. We have no treasurer's report or president's report this evening. Any questions the board members have for staff?
Yeah, I have a couple of things I'd like to talk about. The first thing is, I read the paper and I understand that there is going to be some issues regarding cannabis, and I know that it's becoming legal after the first of the year. And after reading the article in the Herald yesterday, I became very concerned, and that's why I passed this out to everyone. And it's something that we really have to look at and address, and I understand that we will be discussing this at the next meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just am very, very concerned on ramifications that possibly could come out of this. After reading this, as I said earlier, I was taken back. So I didn't think it would be as serious. Maybe I'm perceiving this incorrectly. My impression when I read it was that this could be extremely detrimental, and I'm very concerned about that here in our village. Secondly, I don't know if these people have to get a license, or I don't know what the program is, but every time we have a storm, I get these people that ring our doorbell, knock on our door, and I call them storm chasers. And they want to come up and look at my roof, and they want to inspect my building and stuff like that, you know? And it's to the point where it's, you know...
Annoying.
Thank you, annoying. And I don't know, does the village have any protocols in place that these people have to be licensed by the village, or do we know that they're even going around ringing doorbells? I look at their license plates, and some of these people aren't even in Illinois.
To advertise their business, no. We don't license that, we don't monitor that, you know?
This isn't advertising.
If they were to do some work, then they do need the license. However, you know, we've run a number of informational items from the police department to beware for scammers, for people who are soliciting like that, to make sure that they are vetted and to call the village and check them out.
Well, I think that there's a difference between advertising and soliciting. You know, advertising, I would think that we'd receive something in the mail, or pick up the paper and read something. When they actually come to the front door and bang on the door, I consider that to be soliciting.
You have your no solicitor sticker on the door, you can point that out to them and say, "Look, you're violating this, and I'm going to call police."
What are they violating?
If you have a no solicitor sticker on your door that says, "Hey, I don't want you to come up here and ring my doorbell."
We don't have any ordinances in place.
Yes, we do if they have it, but it requires a no solicitation sticker.
Yeah, they're free. You can get a free no solicitor sticker, and they will not be...
But we can't prohibit it.
They won't knock on your door.
Okay. First Amendment issues, we can't just prohibit it, but people have the option to put up a no solicitor sticker, and they're supposed to honor that, and if they don't, you can call the police.
All right, well, thanks. I, you know, all the years, I didn't know that, and I think that the public should know that also. So if you're being disturbed, bothered, harassed by these people, if you end up with a no solicitation sign, you put that in your front door, and then they have to leave. Okay, thank you. Now, on the brighter side, we have an anniversary for one of our police officers, Kyle Robisky. He has 14 years of service with the police department. He's not here this evening, so we'll eat his cake. And Jeff isn't here either, is he?
Jesse is.
Oh, he is here. You don't get any cake. Jeff is celebrating a birthday, which was July the 6th. Congratulations. And lastly, probably, I'm very proud to say that Adam, our village trustee, and his bride, Stephanie, finally had their baby. Maxwell Edwards. And Adam told me he did all the work. Maxwell Edwards was born on June 19, and he weighed nine pounds, three ounces. Isn't that amazing? Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Anything else? Brings us to the town hall portion of the meeting this evening. Again, if you're going to speak at town hall, please fill out one of the white forms. We do have several, and just bring them on up. Just bring them on up, that's fine. Or when it's your turn, yeah, she'll call them randomly. So we will just step up to the microphone, try to keep your comments to three minutes or less, and please do state your name and address. Lorna needs that for the record.
Hi. Good evening, President, Board of Trustees, Paula Staff. My name is Wendy Cosio. I live at 654 Hazen Lake Court in Bartlett. Excuse me, I'm nervous. I'm here before you as I request that you not vote on the change to ordinance section It's of the Bartlett Municipal Code. It's the addition of raccoons and squirrels as wild animals, and it really kind of concerns me. What do you mean? Listed in there, you have the term harboring. And did this come about because of just one individual with the neighbors' complaints? Or why should all the other animals, excuse me, have to suffer because this person refuses to comply? We generally, we seem to have a common term here in Bartlett, not in my backyard. Does this also apply to the wild animals? They can't go where they need to go for finding food? I hope you'll readdress this issue for the animals and the citizens that don't seem to have a voice here in Bartlett.
Thank you, Wendy.
Ellie Dunzing?
Hello, my name is Ellie Dunzing, and I live at 1168 Foxborough Lane in Bartlett. I'm here to talk about Bannerman's Beer Garden plans. I will begin by saying that a home is supposed to be your own personal sanctuary, a place where you can go to relax after a long day's work, a place that is quiet and peaceful. This beer garden will disrupt this peace, no matter how many different hour constraints are put upon it, and the neighbors are the ones who have to deal with the noise on a daily basis. Plus, Bannerman's has been known to push their boundaries, meaning that rules can be passed in this room, but down the road, Bannerman's will try to alter rules for the sole benefit of themselves, not the neighbors. Bannerman's show this when the noise level, with the noise level when live bands play. Every so often, Bannerman's tries to see how loud they can be. The noise increases until we voice our frustrations. Then things are okay for a short time, but after a while, Bannerman's begins testing the limits again. This never-ending cycle makes it very difficult for people to live around them. I have no trust with Bannerman's because of their empty promises. Bannerman's will say everything they can to pass this beer garden now, but I fear that they will begin trying to test their limits after everything is said and done based on past situations. Then it's the neighborhood's problem to try to obtain a little bit of peace. A neighborhood and its occupants should not have to continuously fight for peace in their own home. Not only has this trust with the Bannerman's business decreased greatly over time from their actions, but they continue to show that they are not good neighbors. Since the last meeting, my family and I have heard profanity directed towards us from this establishment that could be heard in our own home. The level of disrespect they have shown towards us has made me not only disagree with the beer garden, but strongly voice my opinions about Bannerman's relocating elsewhere. On top of the disrespect this establishment has portrayed, the outbursts involved only one individual creating a great deal of noise. Multiply that one individual by 40 and add alcohol to the mix. No matter the time limits or the attempts to decrease noise, this beer garden is going to be loud and uncontrollable. When will the day come when us neighbors can live peacefully in our own homes and stop fighting for this basic quality of life that everyone should have? I ask that you think about the never-ending uphill battle we will have if these plans are passed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Tiffany Dunzing?
Hi, I'm Tiffany Dunzing. I'm Ally's mother. I live at 1168 Foxborough Lane in Bartlett. Bartlett has a reputation of being a village which supports small businesses and welcomes industries. This is good for the community and brings in tax dollars. An unintended effect from this is that Bartlett is now getting a reputation that it doesn't care about its residents, specifically those around those small businesses and industries. I have neighbors who have just moved in, and they're already saying they're going to move because they think Bartlett doesn't care about its residents. There needs to be more of a balance between the businesses and the residents. Right now, most of the decisions favor the businesses. It seems like every few years I have to come to these meetings and fight another new bad idea. I've been here for midget wrestling, for cage fighting. I missed the meeting about the two-day concert. An unintended effect from that decision was that all the overflow parking comes to our neighborhood because we're within walking distance of the event. So in the morning, we get to wake up to beer cans in our yard. This is something that we have to deal with every year because of that decision. I shouldn't have to fight this hard to have peace in my own home. I should have the same rights as everyone else in this community, and I should have the same rights as everyone else in this room. Last week, at 10:00 PM, I heard an employee from Bannerman's yell at me from the exact location where the beer garden is scheduled to be. He yelled, "F you, ma'am." It was so loud, it sounded like it was coming from my neighbor's backyard. I was scared to say the least. So now, not only do I have to deal with the noise coming from Bannerman's, but now I'm being harassed by its employees. This board has the power to stop this escalation, but with a no vote tonight. I'm tired of this, and I would, I think it's time to consider the residents who live around these small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Teri Pearson?
Good evening, all. Teri Pearson, 1178 Foxborough Lane, Bartlett, four-year resident. I'm seriously considering leaving if this Bannerman thing is not put to sleep in a fashionable way that protects us, the people that pay your salaries. That's all I got to say about that. Now we'll move on. Who is responsible for 59 and Sterns? We've been three years now in the construction, and we work for a couple of months, and then we call, and somebody blames somebody else, and then the next one, it's just a bunch of finger pointing. We know, we the residents, because you just passed that new 50-foot or 50-truck place down at the end of our area, it's for the construction, for all of those trucks that are going to be coming. So when is it going to get done? Magically, when the trucks start coming? Or do we have to have someone else seriously injured at that intersection before? Personally, closer to my home, I've got a neighbor that just moved in with two kids, four and two, a neighbor across the street with a handicap, a neighbor across the street that has apparently no parents that really pay attention because I see the kid out in the street all the time. This is a dead-end street. Why there is no dead-end sign? Because a month and a half ago, I saw a semi, believe it or not, 53-footer, pulled right in front of my house on Foxborough, stopped at Brewster, when he realized he couldn't go down to the dead end. Took him 10 minutes to back out. And I see this only the beginning of semis and other huge vehicles coming when they don't know where they're going. We had a sign, you guys put up a sign, that was buried by tree branches on Sayre Road. I asked that it be moved so that it would be visible to anybody driving. Well, they did move it. They moved it to the beginning of the street, so now you can't see it even if you were looking for it. So I'm sure there's an ordinance that, because it looks like it's exactly so many feet from the streets, but we need to do something about my corner before somebody is hurt. I want to thank the police department. Roger, I believe it was, had the traffic something or other, I don't know what it was called, but it was parked in front of our house for, I don't know, 12 hours, detecting the speed. And when the officer came to get it last night, because it had a boot on it, a Denver boot, he said, "That's because somebody stole one and dumped it into a ravine." And anyway, my question was, "How much?" He said, "Five Gs." Okay, so if we're spending five Gs, why isn't this machine monitoring what time and what speed somebody just went past it? Because it doesn't do any good to just sit there because you can see it before you get there, so you slow down. And if there's no repercussion, you're not going to slow down. So the neighbors in that immediate area would like to see the village move and do something besides listen to my phone calls. That's all I got. We'll be back again in another month to see what's happened.
Thank you, Teri.
Greg Wortman?
Teri, you don't have to wait a month. We're here in two weeks, so nothing's happened by then, you can come back.
Good evening. I'm Greg Wortman. I live at 1164 Foxborough Lane. So I'm basically on the corner of Sayre and Foxborough, and Bannerman's is practically in my yard. So wouldn't be any surprise that I have some concerns about this situation, namely, the noise. You can hear Bannerman's a lot in the current situation, so if you expand this to allow this beer garden, the concern I have is that when you start mixing alcohol as the hours go on at night, you're going to end up with, in any situation, not just Bannerman's, but in a setting like that, you're going to end up with intoxicated people making a lot of noise, which has a big impact on people trying to conduct their lives and get a good night's sleep and get up and go to work in the morning. So that's my main problem. I don't have any problem with Bannerman's, per se, but I think that's a real concern. And I'd rather not, I'd rather see it not happen, but if it did happen, I think there'd have to be some serious constraints to avoid that. And also, some constraints that are going to, as Ally mentioned, you know, test the limits, seeing if you can push it a little further and a little further, and before you know it, we're going to have live bands out there and drunks making noise at 1:00 in the morning. I have concerns that this is just the beginning. So that's my two cents. Okay?
Thank you.
Ken Morowski?
Good evening. My name is Ken Morowski. I live at 1186 Linfield. I've lived in Bart for 44 years. There are some good things and some bad things that have happened in this community, but Bannerman's is not a good thing to happen. So some of the things that I have a concern about, is there going to be a smoking regulation on their patio? If it's, is smoking allowed? It's not. Is there going to be a ban? No TVs? What is the size of the people that can be on the patio?
If you can't hear louder, we can't hear you.
What is the size of the people that are going to be allowed on the patio? Hundred, 50, 20? What is it?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. Perfect. What are the hours?
I was going to give a presentation during the committee meeting.
Yeah.
So I haven't presented my case yet here.
Yeah, we're going to be going through this at committee, and that's where we're going to go through all the details of the plan.
There is no real plan yet, then, right?
There is.
There is a plan.
There's a sketch. There's a concept.
How do I see it? How can I see the plan that he's presenting?
You can go online and look at the board packet.
I've got a PowerPoint. It's going to come up on the PowerPoint.
It'll be up on the screen in about 15 minutes.
Because I know they smoke on the sidewalk in front of their building. I don't know if that's legal. Isn't there a law that you can't smoke within 100 feet of your business?
15 feet from an entrance or an exit?
Well, they smoke on the sidewalk right in front of their house, in front of the business. See cigarette butts all over the floor. So I guess we don't enforce that, right? Perfect. The other thing I want to move on is that we don't have to keep talking about Sterns and 59, because this is an issue. And the last thing I have to say is, there should be a light on Sayre's or Linfield for us to get out of our subdivision. The traffic is getting heavier and heavier, and it is creating a very dangerous situation for everyone, not only the people that race up and down Sterns, but for the people that try to exit out of our subdivision. The last thing I have to say is, who is in charge of the parkways when the grass is like 10 inches high?
What area are you talking about by?
There's a house on Foxborough and Sayre.
I'm not sure.
I cut the grass this morning with my mower, because the lady is about 85 years old, and she cannot cut it. But it isn't, it's a blight. It's terrible-looking. Now, someone should cut the grass, at least in the parkway.
Yeah.
I mean, don't we have anything that can help senior citizens?
There are church organizations that will do that, yes.
How do we, do I have to call you?
You could, I suppose. I could put you in touch with the church.
And I don't expect you to cut everyone's grass in Bartlett, okay? That's out of the question. But some people can do it.
Sure.
And it doesn't add anything to our community.
I agree, and I think that there's organizations, church groups that will go in and do that to benefit some of the elderly and people that are having problems. I know of a group that will do that.
What about dead trees on someone's property that can't cut it down? A senior citizen.
Yeah, that's a little different than mowing grass, I think.
I understand.
Dan might be able to make comment to that.
Is there anything for senior citizens? I mean, everyone is not 30 years old anymore.
That's true.
I mean, we have plenty of kids that run around with these trucks. I see them, there must be 65 of these kids that cut grass at the golf course. Can't they do this?
Well, that would be coming back to Dan, but it's his employees, his people that would be doing that, as far as the village goes. So I don't see how we would be...
I mean, it's a community we all live in.
True.
To try to make it better for everyone, there's got to be, we can pull together and make it better. I went there this morning and cut the lady's grass with my mower. I'm 76 years old. I'm not trying to be a hero.
Right.
But someone's got to help.
And I do.
Instead of turning a blind eye to 59 and Sterns Road and all this other crap that goes on here, like the street in front of the little, the play school, whatever you call that, where they built the road that jets out into the street, I mean, we've talked about that two months ago. No one's done anything about it. So what do we do? We just don't do it?
Ken, thank you for your comments. We got several more people.
Thank you. Thank you.
Adam Bensky?
Hi, my name is Adam Bensky. I live at 7N208 Sayre Road, house directly behind Bannerman's, facing Bannerman's. My neighbors are all down to the south of me, here to voice similar concerns that they have. I would point out that, you know, we all are at different stages in our lives, and I think we all have the same concerns. We live in a residential neighborhood, and we're concerned about the noise that potentially is coming from Bannerman's. I wasn't able to attend the meeting last month, and I listened to it online, and in the comments, the owner said that he went behind the Bannerman's when there was a concert playing, and he couldn't hear it. And I wanted to support my neighbors and agree with them that that is 100% false. I can hear noise when there's concerts inside. I can hear them with the windows closed, and I can hear them on the back end of my house, which is a pretty big lot, if you're familiar with my property. So I have the same concerns that they have, and so that's why I'm here as well. So I appreciate you guys taking our concerns into consideration. So I appreciate you guys taking our concerns into consideration, and that it is a residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks.
Evening. My name's Teresa Materna, 329 West North Avenue. A couple different things this time. It's not just the traffic issue, so I have a question with the building department, because we recently had our fence replaced, and we went through the permit process, and the initial fence inspection failed, so we had the people come out and refix it. But I actually had to come in, we were here for another reason, to find out if the second inspection passed or not. So is there a process that you let the residents know whether their inspection passed or failed other than us following up on it?
Ryan.
Your, I actually conducted your inspection on, your reinspection, knocked on your door, you weren't there. Yeah, I should have let you know that your inspection passed.
Okay. I just didn't know if there's a, you know, maybe when we felt the applications, put our email on it or something so that something can be sent out that says it passed or didn't pass for future. The other issue I have again is the traffic at North and Western. And I'm hoping you got the letter. I sent a letter. I dropped it off yesterday for the boards. I don't know if you've received it or not. But basically, I've been here several times over the last year to discuss the traffic situation. I appreciate that you've listened to what's been said. I appreciate the involvement of the police department. I presented a couple of my own statistics just by taking my own little video Snapchats and whatever of counting the traffic and who stops and doesn't stop. The traffic initially got better with the flashing stop signs and increased police presence. However, overall, it has not gotten better. The traffic study back in, I believe, November, there were 44,000 cars in one week in one direction on the street. That's an extremely high number of vehicles for a residential street. I know the issue is multifactorial. It's got construction, it's a cut-through route, train traffic, school traffic, and those are just some of the reasons for the increased traffic. I've spoken with many of my neighbors. We're all in agreeance that something besides traffic enforcement needs to be done for the safety of all who live on the street. Traffic enforcement and flashing stop signs are a start to fix the problem. But I feel it's time that the board itself gets involved with coming up with a solution instead of just depending on the police to do enforcement. It's unrealistic to expect to have police enforcement 24/7 on one intersection. I've been following the What's Happening in Bartlett page, and people are complaining about traffic all throughout the village, so I know I'm not the only intersection. And as before, I'd be willing to participate in a committee group, whatever. I'm in a position where I have time to do that, if that's needed. And I, the letter I have has been signed by many of my neighbors on North Avenue, Hickory, Oneida, and the people I approached on Western weren't home when I went to get neighbor signatures. And just the last thing, I did a little camera video again tonight. It wasn't of the stop sign itself, but just traffic when we sit at our dining room table. And in a 25-minute period, there were 80 cars that went by from 6:00 to 6:25 tonight. So that wasn't even the stop sign issue, that was just the amount of traffic going through. So any help you can give on this matter, I appreciate it. The letter has my address, my email, my phone number. I'd be more than happy to help. I know my neighbors would be too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Dobberstein. I live at 1190 Linfield Lane. My question originally was concerning 59 and Sterns. Can one of you at least answer what's going on there? Why it's taken so long for that corner to be completed?
Dan, can you give us an update? There's been enough comments.
First of all, that's a IDOT intersection and is IDOT project. We've been in communications with IDOT because it is taking forever. Unfortunately, the issue that they've run into, the 25 utility conflicts that have delayed the project, delayed the project, and continue to delay the project, it's kind of like a domino, it sounds like. One utility has to move, and then before the next one can get in there and do his thing, and then the next one. They still told us that they would be done by this fall, but if they don't get started soon, I'd have that very hard time believing that. But we have been calling IDOT. Everyone is, you can call IDOT too and put some pressure on them, but we're calling them and saying what's going on. As far as that jut out by the preschool there, that's all part of the improvements. They only have half of it done, the north side. Once they get the south side done, it's being widened to the south. Everything will be shifted over, and that bump out won't be there anymore. But until we get that work done, it's going to be like that. But we will continue to call IDOT, find out what's going on with moving that along. But right now, what they've been telling us is it's all about the utilities.
Can't they at least, excuse me, mark the lanes so that, you know, nobody knows where to go? There's cars that'll turn in the, from my lane, I'm going straight across 59, and they're going to make a left-hand turn. Cars are doing three lanes of turn left. If the lanes were marked, people would know where to go, less chance of an accident.
The lanes, I'll have to look at it, because I think the lanes are.
The lanes are not marked at all, hardly. I've, I mean, we've talked to, I've.
Maybe they need to be remarked, but.
They need to be repainted.
We will, yeah, I'm hoping to see construction out. I mean, no one wants to see the construction, but we do want to see the construction.
Well, you don't want to double work, but you don't want people hurt either.
It's between working with DuPage and IDOT. DuPage paints theirs even in between their surfacing, and IDOT has not, and that's very disappointing. And we've been, I, I don't know how many calls. I don't know how many times we've had meetings with them. It frustrates the heck out of me as well. And you, I've had meetings where I've walked out. I've had meetings where I've walked out of IDOT, and it's not fun. And I do apologize, I hate it too. I've got kids that drive that intersection, and it drives me nuts. So we do need to get it painted. Let's see if we can get it painted as soon as possible.
And the other comment I have is on Bannerman's, which would be a no vote. Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, no problem.
Hello, my name is Rochelle Probelski. 875 Brewster Lane, been in Bartlett for 40-plus years. Never been so unhappy with Bartlett. First building of the Big Box Warehouse is in our area. Hate to be here again, but here goes. And I thank you so much for those of you who voted against it. I hope you received my thank you emails. Our homes are our safe havens, as Ally was saying. We go to work, or school, or both. Or some of us don't work, we just want to have a safe haven. We want to go home to do whatever we please. Sometimes we just want to read a book, relax, enjoy as much quiet time as we can. It is a lot to ask for a neighborhood who has been there many years before a business was built to put up with noise for so many years. Neighbors in the Bannerman's area opposed in 2010, when the original owner pushed for the ultimate fighters to appear, then also for the wrestlers who staple gunned each other's faces. And I'm not kidding those of you who are new to Bartlett. Both passed. Your predecessors passed, even after so many neighbors opposed in writing through a petition. Didn't matter at all. Some of us have been cheated out of quality sleep for years due to noise coming from inside of Bannerman's, even with our windows are closed. I am three blocks away. Ally, who spoke tonight and also spoke at the planning commission meeting, has been cheated out of quality sleep in her teenage years. She's now working two jobs plus going to school. I imagine she has a lot of homework. Would she end up going somewhere else in order to do her homework? Maybe the library? Why should she have to? Two planning commissioners were totally against this proposal at the planning commission meeting. I listened to the minutes online on YouTube. One said, "Just give it up. Don't ask for this, you'll just create problems." You know, there are 12,000 square feet in Bannerman's? That's a big space. Now they want more. There are houses nearby. Did you ever have a chronically ill person live in your home? I have. Chronically ill people need quiet time as much as possible, as we all do, and any of us can get sick at any time. Did you ever have a terrible neighbor who only cared about partying, not paying attention to how it affected his neighbors, even a chronically ill one? I have. Did we call the Bartlett Police? Oh, yeah, we did. We went through the motions. This was eight years. Sure didn't provide our inconsiderate neighbor from having parties most nights of the week, was very tiring. Oh, yeah, sometimes they just played bags. What did we hear? Thump, 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 as you're trying to fall asleep. Didn't call for that, that was just frustrating, it wasn't worth it. Excuse me, I'm so sorry. Noise does travel. When people drink, they become loud. There's no controlling their language. And I don't think the servers at Bannerman's are going to approach anybody and say, "Excuse me, stop swearing or stop speaking so loudly." Sometimes obscenities start to fly at very loud volumes. I'm not exaggerating at all, I speak from experience. And I've noticed that the four-letter word is so common, as Tiffany said. Minutes also include someone saying they believe families would be enjoying this outside area. Are the loud people not going to be allowed to sit out there? Don't believe higher fencing is the answer either. I have to share something with you regarding my party-going neighbor. Sorry. After seven or eight years of putting up with this, he actually shared an aggravating experience with me that he had. Oh, yeah, he was complaining. Our neighbor boy down the street was playing basketball in front of his home, and Mr. Partier just couldn't fall asleep because of that noise. He said, "Gee, Rochelle, isn't that terrible?" Oh, I was supposed to feel sorry for him? I share this with you because people are sometimes basically in their own little world. They really don't realize what they are doing may aggravate and disturb someone else, even a sick person. They don't care. I wish you quiet quality time in your safe haven when you go home this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rochelle. I believe that is it for the comments in town hall.
There's one more.
Oh, go ahead, bring it on up.
My name is Mike Reiskas. I live at 852 Kingston Lane in Bartlett. Been in Bartlett for 27 years at a couple locations. I also own the house at 310 North Avenue that Teresa mentioned earlier, and just wanted to reiterate the traffic issue there. Should never come with a problem and not a solution. And literally, I don't live in that house yet, we're just in the process of moving over there, but it's over the top. There's cars, particularly the eastbound traffic in the evenings, 40 miles an hour, easy. And that stop sign that flashes is just kind of a slowdown a little while you turn right, except for during the periods of enforcement. So I'm not in that house yet, I might not be in there for a few months. So Bartlett Police, please feel free to use my driveway. If you're backing behind the house, no one will, no one will see you, because the enforcement does seem to work. So just wanted to reiterate that it is definitely a real problem, bought the house knowing it was a high-traffic street, but it's really over the top. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for being here. That's it for the town hall portion of the meeting this evening. Move to the standing committee reports. Your standing committee report is under Building and Zoning Committee Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. Item A1 was covered under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Next standing committee report is Community and Economic Development Committee Chairman Gabrenia.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item B1 was covered under the consent.
Thank you, Chairman Gabrenia. Finance and Golf Committee Chairman Dany.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had nothing on the agenda this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Dany. License and Ordinance Chairman Ranky.
License and Ordinance has nothing further this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky.
Wait, there, there's an item.
It's marked on consent on our packet, but it's not on consent.
Yeah, it was on consent.
Oh, not on my copy, sorry. I had a staff version.
It was on consent. Police and Health Committee Chairman Carbonaro.
Mr. President, no items on our agenda this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonaro. Public Works Committee Chairman Camer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our one item was covered under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Camer. New business anyone would like to discuss?
Well, I brought things up before when it comes to traffic control and trying to slow down traffic, because we have several streets in Bartlett that we have issue with. But I'm going to bring it up again from the perspective of thinking about speed islands. I've heard all the negatives about why, now, now, that's different than speed bumps, because speed bumps will make noise as you go over them, everything else. But lots of cities do have speed islands, where we raise up, you're on that island for 10 feet, and then you go off of it. And I just think there's some roads that we need to be thinking about trying something like this, even if it's on a trial basis. Braintree would be one of those streets, obviously, North Avenue, Western there as well. Some way to slow down traffic, because people won't go over a speed island that quick, and if they do, they'll wish they wouldn't. So I know there's issues with the snow plowing. You know, we've always had this, but I just think there's something we ought to be able to at least try, even if it's only a trial period, to see if it works. I don't know what else we can do for the residents. We've got the police monitoring the intersections, we've got the traffic calming lights, we've got the portable light system. We can't very well, you know, give speeding tickets remotely. People would like that, I think, that live in those neighborhoods, but that isn't going to happen. But a speed island, not a bump, but a speed island would slow cars down. I know it would be somewhat of a hassle for, in, in other ways, but I think in certain roads, we need to think about at least trying something on at least a sample basis.
Chief, do you think you could come back with some kind of a thought on, I mean, I really applaud Teresa for your patience. She's, has been at this for a really long time. And I've came out there of that intersection there on Friday mornings at 7:00 a lot, and there are tons of cars. And it's almost a safety hazard, because there's so many cars turning right over those railroad tracks, and they get backed up. There's, there's got to be something we can do about that cut-through.
We can take a look at it. A, a lot of this things as far as signage goes, you have to be careful about, because you have to meet certain traffic warrants, they call them. And in those locations, we don't have a lot of crashes. We have a lot of traffic, but not a lot of crashes. So we've been doing a lot of enforcement, like I have my statistics from our enforcement at North and Western. We've, between August 9th of 2018 and June 1st of 2019, we were out there 297 times, wrote 101 citations and 258 warnings. So we're trying to be visible, we're trying to enforce things, but I don't know how to regulate the traffic, because roads are designed to help traffic flow without putting up some type of signage that restricts it. And I don't, I don't know, we'd have to take a look at the, the law and see if we'd even be able to do something like that.
Well, we thought, one of the comments that came up earlier, like last year practically, was the fact that it was cut, people were cutting through because Lake Street on ramp was under construction. That's open now, isn't it?
It is. So one of, one of the things we're doing right now is, we are conducting, conducting another traffic study or counts with the new traffic counters we have around that area to see if the amount of traffic has been reduced since the construction on both 59 and Lake Street has been substantially reduced. There's still some on 59 a little bit, but I don't think the cut-through traffic was what it used to be, when the construction was both going on on 20 and 59 at the same time.
Okay. I mean, I'm sure the whole board and certainly the people that voiced their opinion on that particular intersection would love to hear some additional thought behind what we might want to try. So anything you can come up with, maybe next board meeting or something, can share it with us?
We have gotten some complaints that we're doing too much out there too, and that we should be spending time in other areas. And those are from residents that live in that neighborhood over there. So as much as we do, there's another side of it too, that people think we're doing too much. So I think we have to, if we are going to look at this, we have to hear both sides of it and take that into account when we come up with a, with a plan, because that's going to affect everyone that lives in that neighborhood as well, potentially.
Yeah, I agree.
And I, and I, I agree with Trustee Camer that maybe we should at least find out from a public works perspective, how much, you know, how do we apply the speed island How do we apply the speed island? How much would that cost? How long does it last? What are some of the practical problems? I mean, we've talked about temporary speed bumps. We've talked about speed bumps. If we're gonna experiment with something, let's at least find out how much it would cost and what would be a best practice on where to put it. Braintree, I think, is... It's a no-go for me. But I think, you know, in this situation downtown, that might make some sense. The downtown streets, and I know, Dan, you and I have talked about this quite a bit, needs to be painted. I think, you know, the... And it's how long is it been since we striped the roads? That's... That needs to get done, too. But I know we're waiting on some of the other issues and...
Why don't you let us take a look at some of the different products that are out there,